School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, May 21st, 2024, in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. Present at this meeting are School Board members, Superintendent Kent Pikel, a non-voting ex-officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk, Ms. Lori Sam. Ms. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Director Barlow.
Here.
Director Cook.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
President Lawson.
Here.
Director Martin.
Here.
Director Nathan.
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 2.1 is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Move or approve. Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at rochesterschools.org backslash Symbly. Item three, comments to the board. It is important for the School Board to hear from our stakeholders regarding issues that impact our students, staff, families, and schools. We welcome communication via email, phone call, at our community engagement listening sessions, and here during comments to the board. The purpose of comments to the board is to give community members an opportunity to The next day tomorrow, agenda is Information and Outreach 4.1, Cell Phone Policy Update. Superintendent Pikel.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. I believe if we can get the PowerPoint up on the screen, I just need to advance, Lori.
provide input directly to the School Board about issues that fall within our authority.
Thank you so much. So as Board members are well aware, all around the country, and actually around the world, people are debating the presence and use of cell phones in schools, and actually in families and in other settings, but our responsibility is in schools. And in Rochester Public Schools, for the last several years, we have been taking a progressively, I think the best word is tighter, approach.
The Board and Superintendent do not respond directly to the speaker's comments during
My first year in the 2021-2022 school year, coming back from the height of the pandemic, we did not have any restrictions on the use of cell phones. In my second year, the following school year, 2223, we implemented red zones and green zones across the school district, in which students could access their phones in a green
the meeting, but may follow up with the speaker if requested and appropriate.
zone and were directed to put them away in a red zone. And then concurrent with that, this year, we have been piloting, in four of our schools, what has been called, in some places around the country, Away for the Day. Our students don't always know it by that name. Often, they know it as that terrible cellphone policy.
Persons who want to make comments to the Board must fill out the online request to
And over the past couple of weeks, we have gone out, literally the last month, we've gone out and we've surveyed students, parents, and caregivers and staff on our cellphone policies today and the policies going forward.
provide comments to the Board form by 5:00 PM on the Monday before the School Board
And so I wanted, before the end of the school year, to give the School Board, and by extension the community, an update on what we heard through that survey. What you can see here is that, and I apologize that some of our bar graphs are a little small, this was a solid sample of all three groups in our school community.
meeting to sign up for a time slot.
We got about 4,588 recipients. You can see, we got the most students, we got a lot of parent caregivers, but we also got 580 members of our staff.
The form is available on the RPS website and on the Symbly main page.
The green are staff, the red are students, and the blue are parents and caregivers. The data that is in the PowerPoint and in the detailed report that is available on our School Board website actually breaks down responses into five categories, including things like strongly agree or somewhat agree, and strongly disagree and somewhat disagree.
A reminder that Policy 206 and Procedure 206A set the time, place, and manner procedures
And as is accepted practice in using survey data, it's valid to combine the top two and the top bottom two responses to get a general feel for what your respondent said. And so I would like to just briefly touch on several major highlights that came from the survey, which will inform the work we'll be doing this summer to get ready for the upcoming school year. So here we can see, the first question that we asked in the schools that piloted Away
and restrictions on comments to the Board.
for the Day this year, which include Willow Creek Middle School, Dakota Middle School, Kellogg Middle School, and John Marshall High School, we said the no-cellphone policy has been a good change.
By participating in the public comment period, each speaker agrees to abide by this public
And if you combine those bottom two and top two responses, we can see students were 72% negative. They disagreed with that proposition. Parents were 63% positive, and staff in those four schools were 84% positive.
comment procedure.
So we have a pretty distinct difference of opinion there between our young people and our adults, and you'll see that play out in the other questions that we asked, both
Procedure 206A also specifies prohibited conduct during a School Board meeting and when making
in those four schools and across the district. We asked those four schools, school communities, if they thought we should continue the no-cellphone policy next year. Students cumulatively had 85%, said they didn't think we should continue. Parents and caregivers, together 66%, said yes, continue.
comments to the Board.
Staff, 90% said continue the policy in those schools next year. So we also gave the survey to students in all other Rochester Public Schools, and what follows are the responses we got in those schools, where the red-zone, green-zone
Speakers, when your name is called, please come to the table.
approach has continued this year, but they
If you have written materials for the Board, please provide them to the Assistant School Board Clerk prior to your remarks, and she will provide them to the Board members. Choose a microphone here at the table to sit at, and please be seated. Please direct your remarks to the School Board. You'll have three minutes to speak, and the timer will be displayed right here on the screen in front of me. Please begin your remarks by stating your name. Speaker one this evening is Dan Cepeda.
The next day tomorrow, agenda is information and outreach, four point one, cellphone policy update. Superintendent Pecow.
Thank you Chair Nathan. I believe if we can get the PowerPoint up on the screen, I just need to advance Lori. Thank you so much. So as board members are well aware, all around the country, and actually around the world, people are debating the presence and use of cellphones in schools, and actually in families and in other settings, but our responsibility is in schools. And in Rochester Public Schools, for the last several years, we have been taking a progressively, I think the best word is tighter approach. My first year in the 2021, 2022 school year, coming back from the height of the pandemic, we did not have any restrictions on the use of cellphones. In my second year, the following school year, 2223, we implemented red zones and green zones across the school district, in which students could access their phones in a green zone and were directed to put them away in a red zone. And then concurrent with that, this year, we have been piloting in four of our schools, what has been called in some places around the country, away for the day. Our students don't always know it by that name. Often they know it as that terrible cellphone policy. And over the past couple of weeks, we have gone out, literally the last month, we've gone out and we've surveyed students, parents and caregivers and staff on our cellphone policies today and the policies going forward. And so I wanted before the end of the school year, to give the school board and by extension the community an update on what we heard through that survey. What you can see here is that, and I apologize that some of our bar graphs are a little small. This was a solid sample of all three groups in our school community. We got about 4,588 recipients. You can see, we got the most students, we got a lot of parent caregivers, but we also got 580 members of our staff. The green are staff, the red are students, and the blue are parents and caregivers. The data that is in the PowerPoint and in the detailed report that is available on our school board website, actually breaks down responses into five categories, including things like strongly agree or somewhat agree, and strongly disagree, and somewhat disagree. And as is accepted practice in using survey data, it's valid to combine the top two and the top bottom two responses to get a general feel for what your respondent said. And so I would like to just briefly touch on several major highlights that came from the survey, which will inform the work we'll be doing this summer to get ready for the upcoming school year. So here we can see the first question that we asked in the schools that piloted away for the day this year, which include Willow Creek Middle School, Dakota Middle School, Kellogg Middle School, and John Marshall High School. We said the no cellphone policy has been a good change. And if you combine those bottom two and top two responses, we can see students were 72% negative. They disagreed with that proposition. Parents were 63% positive, and staff in those four schools were 84% positive. So we have a pretty distinct difference of opinion there between our young people and our adults, and you'll see that play out in the other questions that we asked, both in those four schools and across the district. We asked those four schools, school communities, if they thought we should continue the no cellphone policy next year. Students cumulatively had 85% said they didn't think we should continue. Parents and caregivers together, 66% said yes, continue. Staff, 90% said continue the policy in those schools next year. So we also gave the survey to students in all other Rochester Public Schools, and what follows are the responses we got in those schools, where the red zone, green zone approach has continued this year, but they did not implement schoolwide policies to restrict cellphone use. So when we asked respondents to respond to the phrase, "Cellphones are a problem at my school," we saw something that I thought was pretty interesting among the students. The student responses were actually quite balanced across the response continuum. Forty, 35% strongly disagreed they were a problem. 22% somewhat disagreed. 14% neither agreed nor disagreed. 20% actually somewhat agreed, and 9% strongly agreed that they've been a problem in their schools. When we look at parents and caregivers, 59% said they are a problem, and 85% of our staff said they're a problem. The next question I want to highlight from the data is a question about phones in the classroom making it harder to learn. Here we saw 74%, 70% of our students strongly disagreed or somewhat disagreed with that proposition. But once again, parents and caregivers, 71% strongly or somewhat agreed, and 88% of our staff somewhat or strongly agreed. Next question, do you support starting away for the day next year, or a cellphone policy in all of our schools that would be similar to the one we piloted in four of our schools this year? And in that area, you could see 83% of our students said they would not support the implementation. 61% of parents and caregivers said they would support it, and 84% of staff said that they would support it. We also had an opportunity for respondents to provide open feedback to, on some questions that asked about their perspective. And when Dr. Ruck, who's in the back, did his magic and analyzed those responses, we came away with the following major takeaways, understanding that there were many, many unique opinions expressed. There really were no systematic concerns or reactions that emerged in the open responses from the staff, students, and parents and caregivers that responded in the four schools that piloted the cellphone restrictions this year. But in the other schools that have not piloted it, we saw concerns about safety, that student access to cellphones might be a benefit in a crisis, or if something happened in the family. We saw very significant concerns about the impact of cellphones on student mental health, as well as students' ability to focus on academic tasks. And then finally, we saw some concerns both about how students would react to cellphone restrictions, and the challenge of enforcing a new policy. So that brings us to a question of what's next. We will be convening a work group very soon after school gets out of our building level and central office administrators to review how things went in our pilot schools, to look at adaptations. The devil really is the detail, in the details in many respects. For instance, in, in most of our pilot schools this year, even though they did away for the day during class, students were allowed to use them at lunch. And that's an important question as to whether that timeout in the policy is a good idea or a bad idea. In a meeting we had last week with all of our district leaders, that had some differing opinions on the merits of that. We will then be doing some initial analysis and the development of those procedures over the course of July, and before August 1st, we will announce procedures for the school year. The chair and I were talking before this meeting that the agenda item is actually cellphone policy. And in fact, that's because the state legislature during the session that has just concluded, passed a law requiring school districts and school boards to adopt a policy. And so while we are talking initially about procedure, which as you know is something that as superintendent is my responsibility, ultimately, this will come to you as a recommendation for board policy that will go through the full policy development process. The legislation that was passed in the legislature doesn't require that to be complete until 2025, however. And it does not speak to the contents of that policy. It just says you need to provide policy direction for the school district in this area. So Madam Chair, that is a brief update on what we heard from our community, and you can bet that this will be a subject of a lot of conversation among our students, I would imagine, over the summer. We understand kids have strong feelings about cellphones. I want them to know, because I'm sure they're all watching the school board meeting right now, that we heard them. We know this is not an easy one. We also know that their, their development and education is our responsibility and adults, and we need to look at what works and at the science. And so stay tuned on this issue.
Board members, any questions? Director McLaughlin.
I just wanted to clarify. First of all, thank you for speaking about student voice. That was one of the questions I wanted to ask. So you've already covered the answer to that. In terms of the non-pilot sites, the data for the students and parents and staff, was that at all levels, elementary and secondary, or just secondary? And is the policy going to apply to elementary school?
Our emphasis was on middle and high school, but everybody was able to complete the survey. Most of the responses were middle and high school, if I have that right, if I'm looking at Peter back there. So in our discussions with elementary, it's interesting, which, which have been ongoing, on the whole, this is not a concern in our elementary schools with very notable exceptions. There are certain students for whom the distraction of their cellphone, especially older elementary kids, is a major issue. So our elementary principals definitely told us they think that our elementary schools need to be a part of the discussion, but it has not been an issue that has had the level of anxiety that is in our middle and high schools, for sure.
And I just thought of one other question related to the, the student voice. Do you have plans to gather more input from students in some way over the summer as you develop the policy?
I would agree Director McLaughlin, that would be a good idea. Our resources for doing that effectively over the summer may be somewhat constrained. I also think to some extent, we have heard pretty clearly what students think. And so to have them come in and, and further tell us they are largely against those, those recommendations might be less productive. But that said, I think that the details could benefit from a lot of student input. For instance, the issue that some of our leaders have raised about lunches, might be the kind of thing that would be beneficial to engage students in providing that feedback. I can definitely commit to that whatever procedures we put in place for next year, and I know the board would feel the same way in developing a policy that presumably would guide our work for the long term, will definitely include multiple opportunities for student voice. That would be the kind of feedback that would be a lot about how is it going while the procedures are in place, such that we could refine. And if we learn that there are some serious issues we need to address, we consider some of those approaches.
Thank you. Director Marvin.
Just briefly, that the student school board, both at the middle school level and the high school level, have talked about this issue considerably this year. I've had the opportunity to meet regularly with middle school students in particular. And on average, students self-report that they're on their cellphones six to eight hours a day. Some of them are on 12 hours a day on weekends. The cellphones that we know today, not the flip phones, you don't know what flip phones were, you're under 50. But the smartphones that kids use today became really, really widespread in about 2010. So we have a generation of students who don't know life without smartphones. And the questions that they asked, the concerns they raised were valid, but also they were things like, well, if I need to contact mom during the day, how am I going to do that? We're sitting in a classroom, and I said, there's, there's a phone on the wall right, right there, you know, five feet from you. Well, I don't know her phone number, which I think we all understand, you know. Mine are in the phone. But kids have notebooks, and they can write it down. They also have Chromebooks, and if they need to email, they can do that. But two things that really impressed me, and I thought were depressing. One is that kids say they're on their phones at night, and they don't get enough sleep. They're so used to having it there all the time, they don't get enough sleep. And the rate of student depression, student mental illness has risen dramatically since 2010. Now, there's some research that shows there's a direct correlation. I'm not an expert in that. But even students get it, that too much time interacting with a screen rather than with human people, or nature, or playing, or reading, probably isn't good for them. But it's going to be an interesting journey that we're going to take. And I think as an educator, as a parent, as grandparent, I think it's critically important that we help our kids get control of what some of them are addicted to at this point. It's just, I think it's really, really important. And so I'm, I mean, the policy thing we have to do anyway, but I'm really grateful that our district is taking this step.
And Superintendent, I know it's not part of the policy, because it's not necessarily something that happens within our buildings. But to build on what Director Marvin said, I'm wondering if as part of your consideration, you're considering what kind of resources or perhaps partnerships we could do with PTAs, or with our family engagement to help parents deliver messages at home to their students about appropriate cellphone use and, and some of those addiction issues?
Yes, absolutely. That was, in the four schools that piloted away for the day, that was one of the big takeaways. The more effectively we actually explain the rationale to parents, the better our student adherence to the use of that cellphone was. And we have some parents, you saw it in the data, and we had some parents in all four of those schools who really disagreed. They want to be able to call, literally call their kid during class. I've had parents explicitly say, I should be able to call. And when I say, you know, you can call the office and we'll get a word to your student. And that's, that's an issue that we know a lot of our parents are living in an age of instant connectivity as well. And so that was one of the things that emerged, and something that will be attended to. I do want to say that even if a student doesn't know their parent or caregiver's cellphone number, our amazing front office staff can find that very fast in any one of our schools. So they would not be without recourse. And there was a day when lots of us got, got a call from the office that you had to go down, because not that you did something wrong, but somebody from home needed something. But we, we, I don't mean to make light of this. This is a tough issue. It matters tremendously to our students, for sure. And I also don't want to have my first three years here, when I thought students mostly liked me, be a distant memory, because now I'm the person who took their cellphones, you know. And so I, I, in some ways, I don't relish it, but I think, Dr. Marvin, you, you raise the stakes, you explain the stakes of this quite clearly. So we're going to take a hard look at it over the summer. I think Director McLaughlin, your point about student voice, even in the summer, in the details, is very well taken. We'll give that, we'll give that a lot of thought as well.
Director Marvin.
And in your comments, you had made reference to, I believe, the science. And I glanced over at Dr. Garcia, perhaps thinking that she might comment. But I think it is important that we take that into consideration. There may be a reason for our kids feeling the need, and we don't want to necessarily implement a policy and then create a much larger problem. And I'm sure, of course, you're aware of that, and we'll probably factor that into it.
Thank you, absolutely.
All right. We'll look forward to updating. Our next item is information and outreach recognitions, National Speech Language Pathologist Day. May is National Speech Language Hearing Month, and May 18th was National Speech Language Pathologist Day. Speech Language Pathologists, or SLPs, help children improve their speech fluency, sounds and patterns, to help make them more understandable. SLPs help grow their students' social communication and complex conversation skills, and build their understanding of symbolic language, gestures, and other signals of speech. SLPs help students to become readers by working with them on rhyming and identifying the beginning, sounds, and words, building vocabulary by acting out words, retelling stories with new words, or playing vocabulary games, and improving reading comprehension. SLPs partner with teachers and other school staff to develop the best learning and support services plans for students, and educate and empower parents to help them learn how to help their children. We are grateful for all the skills that our speech language pathologists bring to serving our RPS students, and we encourage you to visit, visit our RPS social media and our website, our news section, to read the interviews with three of our speech language pathologists, and get more insight as to what they do every day. Item 4.3 is board member committee updates. Does any board member have updates from their committee since the last meeting, or any information to share? Director Barlow.
Yes, I'd like to give a shout out, if you will, to Elton Hills Elementary. I, along with Superintendent and perhaps other board members, attended the family fun night on the 16th of May, and was so impressed with the hundreds of families who were present. Elton Hills truly is a neighborhood school, so many families chose to walk to the school. I had opportunity to speak with parents, grandparents, and without fail, they spoke highly of staff and programming, and felt nothing but blessings, if you will, in terms of, of for Elton Hills. And so I wanted to mention, you know, Natalie Stoffel, the instructional coach who I think undersees that, and then the school principal, Steve Wellman, for his great work. There were many staff members that's occurred after, off the books, after hours, and they were all there committed. A wonderful time. And, you know, I developed a greater sense of neighborhood schools, but more specifically, family involvement and engagement, how important that is to create opportunities for families to, to come together, to relax, to have fun, to see their children at play. And even as parents, I observed a couple of the parents playing. You're never too old to play until you maybe hit your 70s like I am. But it was a great time. I just wanted to really, you know, bring attention to that.
Thank you. Any other reports? Director McLaughlin.
I just want to recognize that the legislative session ended over the weekend, and we do not have a report prepared yet, but will in the near future.
Great. All right. Let's move on to our consent agenda. Items 5.1 through 5.15 are, on our consent agenda, would any board member like any item removed for separate consideration? Move approval?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Item 6.1 is a focused topic, deeper learning update. This is related to one of our strategic plan district-wide initiatives or systems change, strategic change, or DISC. Superintendent Pecow.
Thank you Chair Nathan. Let me ask, I see them already moving, they weren't waiting around. Ask colleagues who are going to be providing this update to come on up and take a seat, and then we'll ask you to introduce yourselves in just a moment. As board members will recall, when we were doing our, developing our strategic plan, we had a working group that was focused on our academic agenda. And that was an initiative that spanned many months, and looked at research, and looked at our data in Rochester Public Schools, and got community feedback on the endeavors that were underway academically in our school system. Initially, the conversations focused a lot on what we might call academic rigor. And it was really an emphasis on more challenge in students' experience. And certainly, that initiative has survived into our strategic plan. But an interesting thing happened along the way. The committee began to feel that there was a concern that the concept of academic rigor in and of itself risked being simply go faster, do more. And people began to think, is that really what sets kids up for a life of being critical thinkers, creators? And so there was a bit of a, a pause, and even a little bit of casting about for another way to think about that challenge. And eventually, we landed on this idea of deeper learning, which absolutely includes academic rigor, especially with mastery, true mastery of core knowledge, core concepts and skills, but also includes two other core components: identity development of our young people as learners, as people who do science, people who create art, people who are math people, people who fix things, and helping them develop identities of who they might be in the future. And then finally, creativity, so that it wasn't static. It was using what they learn academically to solve problems and to make things. And so, long story short, we wrote a grant to the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative, and were awarded $1.2 million to support an innovation initiative. And the first year of that project is the one you're going to hear about now. And the first year of that project is the one you're going to hear about now. And by design, it has been very focused on teacher leadership and teacher ideation because the first thing we've needed to do is define deeper learning. What actually is deeper learning, not in a textbook and not in a school in California or Kentucky, but here in Rochester? Next year, the second year of that innovation project continues and we'll be adding measurement. To what extent are kids experiencing deeper learning? To what extent are teachers feeling like they're getting through to deeper learning? And then the following year is really when we begin to look at integrating deeper learning throughout the work we're doing in Rochester Public Schools. So this is a go slow to go fast strategy to try and really empower and give our teachers something that they very often lack, which is the time to try things, to collaborate, to gain some clarity, such that three years from now, when the board is, for instance, adopting, approving adoption of a new curriculum or as we're conducting professional development or as we're looking at assessment data, we'll really have a deep understanding of what deeper learning is in practice. So this is an update on a work in progress that I'm really glad Peter and Amanda and Mark and Maria are here to give us. I think probably before I turn it over to you, if you could just go down the line and introduce who you are, though I think many of us know you, and then we will jump into the discussion.
I'm Maria Qualley, First Grade Sunset Terrace.
I'm Mark Miles. Did I press the button?
You're good.
I'm the deeper learning coordinator.
I'm Amanda Kouse, music educator, band director at Century High School.
Peter Dodds, assistant principal, Century High School.
Well, thank you. And as Dr. Pecan mentioned, this year was intentionally designed to be teacher-driven. And what we designed to do was have teams of teachers learn to explore and apply the RPS deeper learning framework, which you see here. You can see that, as Dr. Pecan mentioned, mastery and creativity, you can see them in the branches, but also the actions that create the context for deeper learning. So the things that we see are necessary for students to really experience deeper learning are there in the roots. And so what we wanted our teachers to do in this exploratory, innovative year was to kind of try things out, prototype some equity-centered, student-centered activities and practices that really kind of help support the mastery, identity, creativity, as well as creating an authentic sense of belonging within the schools. With this being a teacher-driven initiative, we knew that every site was going to look a little different. What worked at one site, what worked for one classroom, wasn't going to look the same, and that was by design. It was really about trying things out and seeing what works that way. As we continue forward with this work, we can look to those exemplars that are created and help support the integrating and help support the scaling that we hope to do in the coming years, as Dr. Pecan mentioned. And so our deeper learning teams, which is what we call them at each site, they met regularly, they learned together, they implemented, they reflected, they refined the processes that were all related to applying the RPS deeper learning framework. Along with that, those teams were part of a larger district-wide deeper learning network. That was designed to experience some shared learning, share some best practices, and kind of make sure that all of the amazing things that were happening at one site weren't kept at that one site, which tends to happen sometimes, even within a building, even within a classroom within a building. So part of the work was definitely very intentionally designed for that communal learning that we had this year. And even though every school approached this a little differently because the needs of one teacher and the needs of their classroom and their students were different, a couple of trends emerged in terms of the work that each team did. And those trends were centered around professional learning, instructional practices, and finding evidence and creating systems of measurement. Professional learning could look anything like going to conferences or book studies or doing instructional rounds. Instructional practices could be teams experimenting with project-based or problem-based learning, doing whole-school projects or whole-grade level projects. And then evidence sometimes took the form of creating look-fores or rubrics, you know, what do we look for when we do classroom observations, surveying students and staff, and doing student focus groups. The reason why, and I'm lucky enough to have my colleagues up here, the reason why I asked them up here is I wanted to highlight what some of that work could have looked like, which is why we have representation from Sunset Terrace as well as Century High School, so that you can see that though the work is strongly centered on the deeper learning framework, because it is teacher-driven and site-specific, it can look very different. And so with that, I'm going to hand it over to Maria.
So at Sunset Terrace, our deeper learning efforts started really last year with the Equity Committee last year. We've been wanting to have a family heritage night. And so the Equity Committee last year already had plans on having a theme for this year. And the school theme is identity, like who are we as a Sunset Terrace Elementary School community? Who are we and why, how do we belong? And we centered or anchored that theme on a book called Where Are You From? And so I have a handout, you know, that I gave to you, which has more information. And so Where Are You From is, the question, the title of the book, actually triggered very meaningful discussions. You know, we found out that that question can be offensive to some people. That question can be an opportunity for some people to share and to be able to share their heritage, and especially immigrant families. Whether black students, it could be offensive because, several reasons. And so there was meaningful discussion that came out of just the question in the title of the book. And so moving to this year, the deeper learning team decided to adopt that plan from the Equity Committee last year. And so the theme in the book is just one of our projects that we had for deeper learning this year. So we had a school-wide theme based on the book. And so the school-wide project for deeper learning for Sunset Terrace was the family night that we had last month. But leading to that, we had every grade level come up with a project for students, you know, using the book and using it across different subjects: English Language Arts, Social Studies, Math, and Science. Because, you know, we believe that deeper learning should be applied in all subject areas. And Where Are You From is a book that we used throughout the year because we believe that in order to have mastery and to help build that foundation, foundational learning, you know, you don't have to have different materials, different things. It is, for us, it's less, it's more. And so from, in the fall, we connected with families, like our first grade team, we did a survey, we sent out a survey to all families asking them this question, encouraging them to look at their roots and their heritage. And again, there were very meaningful discussions. A lot of our immigrant families in first grade, they were, they just answered the question. They were willing to share about their heritage. Interestingly, our white families said, "We don't have anything to share. We're just from here. We're just from Rochester." And so as a first grade team, during conferences, we were able to have a talk or a conversation with our families and just kind of a teaching moment. You know, we all have stories. We all came from somewhere. And this book is, you know, this book is about, you know, it's your family. It's your family culture. And so, and so, you know, all throughout the year, we had different projects for each grade level. And then we had our final project last month, which is our family identity night, and student projects were on display from kindergarten to fifth grade. And for first grade, we had, we connected it with our Social Studies lessons on the seven continents because that's when we teach this lesson in Social Studies. And we had groups of students research a country that they connected with, and families brought and shared artifacts from their heritage. And we had it on display in one of the hallways. Other grade-level teams had other projects. We had mini concerts, we had an art show, and we had a cultural fashion show and presentation. We had several, we had a lot of community groups. Student groups from the three high schools participated with the help of our Equity Specialist from Mayo High School. We had several community groups who also participated. And we had the author of the book come and visit our school, and she shared about her family and her heritage. She's from Argentina. And then we also had a World Cafe. We featured different foods from different parts of the world. We had over 800 people attend our family night and, you know, and connecting with our students' identity was really the main focus of our deeper learning project.
We're going to highlight kind of the approach that we took at Century with our deeper learning. In the, what did we do? This is our deeper learning group. At the beginning of the year, we kind of just centered ourselves as we embarked on this and what does deeper learning mean to us. We did some podcast sharing amongst ourselves. We also had a book study, Teaching for Deeper Learning, that was open to both members of the deeper learning team and our staff at large that was led by our instructional coach. One interesting thing we also did is we had student listening sessions each month. When we, each month, we isolated one of the roots of the tree. And an instructional coach sought student input and student feedback and perspective. As we talked about deeper learning, what do these things mean to the students? How do they see them in our buildings? And gathered that feedback to help guide us. And just a lot of self-reflecting for ourselves. When we think of mastery, identity, and creativity, if you think about what you taught in class today or what your plan is for tomorrow, does it hit all three of those areas? And if it's a little short in one, is there a way you can modify so that you're expanding what's happening on that daily basis? We also took some risks this year. There's pictures on the screen there. That was probably one of the highlights of the year, and that is where our graphic design and creative writing classes partnered with the kindergartners at Churchill and created an illustration of a story they had written. So the students from Century were able to visit the students at Churchill and work with them that way, and then they got to come to Century to see their finished products there in our auditorium. So that collaborative piece across the grade levels was super important in our learning this year. We also had deeper learning buddies where we took our book study and took a strategy and worked together and took time to observe each other in our classrooms and just kind of talk through that way. Because as much as you do in your own classroom, sometimes it's great to have that second set of eyes and ears and seeing and people to bounce ideas off of. We also had seven members that did attend the deeper learning conference in San Diego, which was really beneficial for us as well. So as we look at what did we learn, we want to continue to cultivate the roots. That was very informative for us, again, being able to incorporate that student perspective, knowing the flow. And that one kind of refers to the whole mastery, identity, and creativity. Some assignments might lean high on the mastery, and then the next one on the identity, and just being comfortable with that flow between the three pieces and how can we continually work to expand, to always include all three. This, the highlight and celebrate, especially for our teachers that are not on the deeper learning team, helping them see that deeper learning already is taking place in their classroom and that this isn't something brand-new. This is already there, so that we can highlight those and expand and grow upon those and celebrate those successes that are already taking places in classrooms each day. Like everything else, we need to provide the resources, and the biggest resource for this is going to be time for us. So as we continue to move forward, how can we establish the time for our staff and students to experience the deeper learning? And increase belonging. Ideally, this increases the belonging of the students, but a lot of the conversations we've had in our deeper learning team is also the belonging and the sense of belonging for staff, especially as we incorporate more teachers thinking of this every day. How can we make sure that they feel like they belong and it's a safe space for them to try something new and expand the learning in their classroom?
So what is next at Century? I've been, as a building administrator, I've been able to support the team, and really it was a year for me to just kind of listen to what the discussions were and figure out ways that I could support from a building leadership perspective. And this is kind of what we landed on. One, we need to develop a conceptual framework of how does deeper learning fit with our other building-wide skips, right? How does deeper learning connect with literacy? Does deeper learning connect with MTSS? How does it connect with restorative practices? And then actually, through our conversations, we're discovering, well, that does kind of fit. So how do we build that framework and then communicate that to the rest of our staff? The second thing that we talked about a lot, and this came out of the conference, a number of people discussed, how do we measure what matters? If we're doing this really well, what is the outcome? And the team really landed on this idea of belonging. Our students will feel like they belong, and as Amanda said, our staff would feel like they belong because we're all working on this singular focus. Another piece that came out of the group this year was this idea to, maybe we should start some of this work with our ninth graders, right? We have ninth graders coming in. There's an opportunity to really focus our energies around belonging and creating that strong environment for deeper learning. And then the final piece was really, we need to, next year, we really want to take pride in exhibiting, celebrating, and sharing of that student work, which was really highlighted both out at the conference that we attended, but also celebrating the work of one another in our school building.
Thank you so much for joining me up here. I really just wanted to bring in just a couple of examples to highlight how this could look and how it does look different at every site based off of the needs of the staff and the needs of the student. And part of that is due to the strength of how we are slow to roll this out, which is the deeper learning by design is flexible. It's not a prescriptive curriculum that you just, you know, plug in, but it's something that works in any subject and works with any already pre-existing curricula. The challenge of that, though, is, and Peter alluded to this a little bit, is that because this is teacher-driven, the integration effort and the alignment with other initiatives, that does put, the effort does come a lot on to the teachers because it's not a pre-prescribed curriculum. They're the ones that are doing a majority of the work in terms of how does it integrate? How does it align? Which, you know, again, brings up the idea of sustainability. How do we continue this really, really important and exciting work and make things sustainable for our teachers without it becoming too prescriptive? You know, and also, that goes to balancing the need of having this general district-wide understanding of what deeper learning is while also maintaining the autonomy of the teacher and the school. Next steps, I know Dr. Pecan already alluded to kind of what the next year and the following year of that looks like, but, you know, we're going to continue to build capacity with our teachers and our leaders, including, you know, strengthening our support for our building leaders to engage with this work as educators and not just as, you know, the principal or the administrator, but have them really engage as educators. And then, you know, aligning and streamlining in terms of, when it comes to integrating this with our current initiatives, figuring out what we are modifying or what we are refining rather than just adding on to. So really, that goes into the drive to kind of create a sustainable practice. We're also looking to continue to align our professional development with deeper learning, you know, again, just to build the capacity and effectiveness of our teachers. And then that accountability and coherence is something that we are going to continue to work on in terms of, you know, having that district-wide accountability without imposing any sort of rigid structure on, you know, what Sunset Terrace deeper learning looks like versus what Century deeper learning looks like. So with that, that concludes the update for deeper learning for year one. And I welcome any questions you may have.
Director McLaughlin.
I think it's really critical, and thank you for doing so, to emphasize the fact that this is not a fast process. And as you were speaking, I was considering, I just had my violin kind of re-hauled a few weeks ago, and somebody had cut down wood over 100 years ago so that I could play. And somebody had cut down wood over a hundred years ago so that I could play. And that sense of time and what time can do for what you're trying to do is really essential. So I'm really excited about this work and everything that you're doing. And I really look forward to hearing your next report here from now.
Director McLaughlin.
I have more of a comment. I just wanted to comment on the Sunset Terrace family in Identity Night, that it's also probably a good study of social media that I saw that posted on the district page and then looked at your page and learned so much more about it. And just an amazing opportunity for those students. And looking at it, first of all, I purchased the book because it will be a wonderful book to add to my library and I think it's a great gift as well. So I have all kinds of ideas about that. But also just the aspect of student belonging, that I think it's just a great way to integrate that into your school community. And I give you a lot of credit for doing that. And then I guess my other comment is that I had forgotten about the roots on the tree. So thank you for highlighting that. And I want to do a deeper dive into learning more about those as well. So thank you. But definitely congratulations on the work at Sunset Terrace. That is just so impressive. And the other thing I wanted to comment is that having the author there, that's what I was so impressed by, that she's not next door. She's on the East Coast. And it was so amazing to bring someone like that to our community and share that with the students. It's just wonderful. So thank you.
Director Garcia.
Yeah, I wanted to follow up on that too, because I didn't realize that she had written like a younger children's book. So I've read Shamil's Furia in both English and Spanish. And I thought it was wonderful. And I think it hits on a lot of the same ideas, but in a young adult novel. And I thought it was very empowering as like, you know, for Latino or Latina children, both in the US and in other countries. So I was very excited to see that. And I'm sorry that I missed her while she was here because I do appreciate her as an author. And I think it's excellent, the way that deeper learning, you know, it all shares the same roots, but it does look, it flowers in the tree very differently. And I think that that's really excellent. And I'm glad to see that there are different, whatever the fruits or the flowers are, that the students are benefiting from in all of those places. You can hear it too in the work that, you know, when you were describing it, how passionate you are about that work. And I really appreciate that. And it's evident when you go into the schools, when some of those things are happening, because it just, it feels very different even from when I went to school. And now I am in, this is my twentieth year post-high school graduation. So I feel like it's, even just in that amount of time, there are so many things that are done in this district that I would not have ever imagined doing as a student. So not only do I applaud you, but I really appreciate all of the specific work that you've done in each of your schools to make this happen.
Director Marvin.
Question I have when it comes to aligning and streamlining, and maybe I'm seeing this wrong, because it seems to me that this deeper learning is all about teaching differently and connecting things and helping the student, first of all, master information. You can't create in a vacuum, so they have to have foundational knowledge. But then learn that they can do something with it. So it's all about the questions that get asked, the way that lessons are challenging a student to analyze and evaluate and apply the information they have to think differently to see themselves as learners and creators, that they can do anything. Well, I could never be a professional basketball player, but, you know, that because they know how to learn, they know how to think, they can create and come up with answers that don't exist today. So that's a long way of asking, what's getting aligned and streamlined?
So thank you for asking that. When I say aligning and streamlining, it really goes to how does deeper learning fit with our other initiatives? So how does it fit with MTSS and literacy? So when we think about, it's not necessarily streamlining what kids are experiencing. In fact, we want, I mean, it's in the title, we want kids to be going deeper and really getting those authentic, meaningful learning experiences. But one of the things that we, some of the feedback that we got is that the first year, sometimes it felt a little separate. Sometimes it felt like we'll do the deeper learning and then we'll do the other stuff. And so in terms of aligning, aligning means to kind of bring it all together. And streamlining means, how do we call out what, when we're already doing it and highlight that and elevate that? And then how do we, you know, in terms of like, how do we better emphasize the good stuff that the teachers, that we want the teachers to be doing, you know, in terms of, you know, and what they're already doing? So it's really about kind of taking, instead of saying add-on, 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 it's here's how these things complement each other. So that's, you know, maybe streamlining was the wrong term, but that's kind of what I meant when I wrote aligning and streamlining. It's really just kind of making sure that the work that we do, that's so important and critical with MTS and literacy, and the work that we do that's so important with deeper learning, that people see them as parallel. And not only just parallel, but complementary. So then how do we make sure that we support our teachers to really kind of make that connection? Oh yeah, please.
Can I make a comment? As a teacher, and this is one of the discussions we've had in our deeper learning team, you know, deeper learning is not a separate thing. It should be a part of, it's best practice. And it's not a different thing. It's what we should do as teachers. And so like, there shouldn't, like, if we are, we're using whatever curriculum we are mandated to use, but best practice tells us we have to do it the deeper learning way, not another thing. But it's giving the teachers the time and kind of the power, empower teachers to do it.
Director Barlow.
Yes. First of all, thank you for providing the companion summary from which my comments are based on. See, district-wide deeper learning networks, I found interesting and was curious in terms of how you envision, you spoke or alluded to the fact that sometimes within a given school or grade, communication may not, best practice information may not be shared. Is it my understanding then that through the DLNs, that's how those processes or best practices are shared? I don't want to assume that I know what I'm talking about, so I'm asking you.
No, no, you're absolutely right. Yeah, so one of my goals for the deeper learning network was to ensure that none of this work was done in a silo. You know, we have teams of people in various subjects and various grade levels, even within their own school. And then we come together as a district. And so then we have, you know, all four high schools. And we have, you know, elementary and early childhood and middle school. And some of the stuff that Sunset Terrace did with identity might ring like as something fantastic that, you know, Century or John Marshall might want to do. And the only, you know, real way to do that is to create a process for that sharing, for that mutual learning to come together. And so that was one of the goals of the deeper learning network. So that is, that's exactly correct.
And then I appreciate the clarity you also provided in the summary when you said that aligning deeper learning with other high priorities initiatives like MTSS has also proved to be complex. So you were able to call that out, recognize it, and it didn't become a shell stopper, an impediment. It's just something you're able to recognize and work around. And then finally, can you give an example of what an instructional round might look like or consist of?
Sure. So I can't speak to how every school runs an instructional round, but I've been a part of some instructional rounds, so I can speak to that. Typically, what would happen is, at least the one that I've been a part of, an instructional coach might take a group of teachers and visit one classroom or several classrooms. Sometimes that's guided by, whether it's just an open note sheet or guided by what we would call a look for. And so that look for might be, you know, what are you noticing that's aligned with deeper learning? Or like may have specific questions. After that, the coach would then debrief, provide some reflection, provide some planning time of, you know, what did you see that you could use tomorrow? What did you see that you might want to change that to make it work for you? So different things like that. So similar to how, it's a model that, you know, medical rounds, you know, in the medical profession, it's that similar model of taking students, although in this case it'd be teachers, to go visit and observe other teachers and observe best practices and key takeaways. And so that's, those are the instructional rounds that I've been a part of. But I, if anyone else has been a part of or run instructional rounds, feel free to jump in.
Well, I think that's what Century's, Century deeper learning buddies. It was a similar version, except it's just with a partner, right? So the partner comes, observes, they debrief, and then vice versa.
Thank you.
Director Cook.
I have been very excited about the deeper learning initiative, the more that we learn about it as a district. And the goal of fostering critical thinking skills is so important for our graduates. Information is so cheap today. And when I hire people, when anybody hires people, I'm not interested in the things that they know. I'm interested in their ability to learn. And that's how everyone thinks, because that's what is important. One of the things that I, I haven't really seen this reflected in any of the work, but I just wanted to pose a question and see if you had a reaction to it. One of the hesitations that I have when I think about this process, because we mostly talk about it in these project-based experiences, the Identity Night is a great example, or the high school kids putting together illustrations for the kindergartners at Churchill, where you are able to put together this nexus of creativity and identity and mastery and then provide some kind of an authentic audience for the students to experiment. And I think it's a lovely aspiration, but the hesitation or the thing that I sometimes think about is that that's potentially really vulnerable for those students to put themselves in a situation where really what we're looking for is the opportunity to fail. I mean, really? Because that's how you learn. That's how you determine that you're capable of overcoming whatever that little challenge was. And so there's a tension there that I'm sure our teachers are becoming very skilled and already are skilled at sort of riding that wave between a safe and supportive environment to experiment and try different things without getting too far over the edge, where they don't sort of drop off and aren't in the optimum zone anymore. I don't know. But is that something that's come up either in the deeper learning network, like how to make sure students are supported and not sort of given too much free rein? Or, I don't know.
I'll speak briefly on this, but then I assume some of my colleagues might have more to say on it. But I think what you're really describing are the roots of the tree. So the actions that create the context for deeper learning, and I have copies of the tree if you guys are interested. And I have them with me now too, if you guys are interested, just in case. But it's really about creating that safe environment where students are creating connections and students are building those relationships. And, you know, it's, what we need to do is provide that as a basis in order to get our students to feel comfortable in that, you know, failure-friendly environment. I know that you're nodding, so I'm just going to let you go.
Yeah, I mean, deeper learning, I teach the content area that lends itself to it. I mean, it's music, show up every day and let's make mistakes because that's what's going to inform what we do next. Like, it's the safest place to make a mistake. If we didn't, class would be really boring and, you know, we just play perfect all the time. But that's a question that's come up a lot from some of my colleagues is like, how do you get the kids they're willing to go through that process? And a lot of it comes back to that sense of belonging, those roots, the sense of community, knowing you've got the support system around there. And so we've had conversations about how can we help foster that environment and other content areas that aren't, you know, as group dependent. There's a huge community component to what happens in our art classes, and not exclusively art, but we're a great example of it. So that's one of the things that we're working our way through is how can we create that sense of environment in the math classroom? And you're willing to take those same risks in that setting? We don't have the answer yet, but that's definitely a conversation we've had multiple times about how do we transfer some of those environments to other content areas more naturally?
I want to speak to that. So in elementary, you know, it's, so you have mastery, identity, and creativity. And part of, like, the whole picture, your end goal, we picture the end. And to get to the end, these are the things that, you know, like in my classroom that I teach. I teach growth mindset. I teach resilience. I teach organization in first grade, executive functioning skills. And you have to let students go through a productive struggle. And that's a safe space to let them go. It's a science and an art as a teacher to kind of gauge, you know, when to push them and not to push them too much where they will break and not be motivated to learn and to do things independently. You have to, I have, and then not to do too much for them. I have to let them go through that productive struggle. They have to go through that pain in order to grow. And then, you know, and that's part of mastery and deeper learning. And when they own it, you know, they own it, they learn from that productive struggle, then they're more motivated to learn. And then it becomes their own, that's identity. And then creativity. You know, you let them go because they already have the skills, they have the grit, they have the resilience to just, you know, be safe and do their, let go of their creativity.
Now I think I'm getting just a little bit of the way you were describing the MTSS supports layering on to the, that was great. Thank you all very much.
Well, I was encouraged to see the work on exhibiting, celebrating, and sharing student and staff work. I know board members have received invitations to events like the graphic design partnership with kindergartners and events like the ones, we would love to come to that one too. And I think I just want to encourage, as you can, each building to make sure that that information is being shared out outside of the building, as Director McLaughlin said about seeing it on social media. Because I really think that's important for our community outside of each individual school community to see how this is manifesting itself. It is, you know, when, I'm not going to speak for my board members, but I think we've heard it in reports of events that they've attended before, how important it was for us to see it. But I think it's really important for our parents to see it, to understand what's happening in their school, but also understanding for the community what's happening across the district. Because this is really, and we've been talking a lot about what makes Rochester Public Schools unique and special and the things that we want to maintain. And I think we're doing something here that is unique and special and that we want to maintain. Any other questions or comments, board members? Thank you very much.
I would just say, it's only grateful, thank you. I think the, she says board members and I sneak in.
Of course.
I'm just an ex-officio.
You are.
But this conversation has illustrated better than I ever could have hoped the power of a good framework. A framework is not a curriculum. It's not an initiative. It's a way of organizing complexity. And what a teacher faces every day in a classroom is of mind-numbing complexity. I mean, you have, every kid is developmentally and educationally progressing or detaching or whatever, and you have however many, and you have a whole band of them, you know, at Century. And so you have to have some way to organize the complexity. And the power of a good framework gives you something like mastery, identity, creativity, or it's harder to name the roots, but the roots are a framework for the learning environment. And so I think you can't have too many frameworks because you defeat the purpose of a framework. If you have, you know, too many things, it's not useful. But what it does is it empowers, and we have fabulous teachers in Rochester, and it empowers and informs teachers, not only within their own practice to be thinking, oh, boy, I hit it out of the park today with identity, but what was the mastery? You know, or, and then to have the dialogue across schools. And so like the fact, I love, Dr. Garcia, that you highlighted, they brought in the author, but I really love that some people went to San Diego from, I mean, teachers should have many opportunities to those kinds of things. In this instance, we had a grant that has enabled it. And I really want to find ways to build that into our continuing funding. So these aren't things we only are able to do when we get a million dollars from a foundation. But it's the kind of thing that is about empowering our educators to be continually refining this practice individually and collectively. So I wanted to just put in that plug for good frameworks. I think my sense, as we were out at Dakota Middle School for the final kind of summary of deeper learning work this year, was basically the year validated that framework. That basically people said, yep, mastery, identity, creativity, that's useful. That basically people said, yep, mastery, identity, creativity, that's useful. It's simple enough to remember it, but it withstands complexity. That's not a small thing. Now, we have a lot to build on in the year ahead, but to say, okay, this works in Rochester. Like, we can use this. When we start to select curricula, we can think through that lens. When we do PD, we can think that lens. I love that, et cetera, you're highlighting measurement. When we try and measure what matters, we can use that lens. So I didn't want us to kind of move beyond that point. This is an important tool in our toolkit, and thank you for helping bring it to life.
Thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
Our next item is 7.1 Monitoring, our 2024-2025 Budget Revenue Projection Update. Superintendent Pecal.
Thank you. We've got John Carlson, our Chief Administrative Officer, and Andy Krogstad, our Director of Finance, coming up. This begins the board's formal consideration of the budget proposal that will be coming to you in a couple of weeks. And through collaboration with our Chair and Vice Chair, we've decided to do a step this year separately from the process that in past years has been combined in the same meeting and the same presentation. And that is to talk about revenues and expenses at the same time in the same conversation. And ultimately, it is true that you will be approving a budget that guides the expenditures we will be making this year. But I think very often, jumping right to the discussion of how we propose to spend the money misses a fact that I know this board has frankly recognized in some painful ways over the last several years in cutting more than $20 million, which is that what we can do with the expenses is wholly determined by the revenues that come in. So tonight, we are only talking about the revenues that will inform the development of the proposal you will receive in subsequent meetings for the expenditures. Because this is our reality, it's our starting point. And from that, we'll proceed all of the ideas and recommendations that we'll be bringing you in your next two meetings, before we ask you to approve a budget for the 2024-25 school year. So John and Andy, thank you for your leadership on this work, and look forward to the discussion.
Yeah, well, thank you for that great introduction. It saved me a couple of words here. So I just wanted to let everyone know, this is our third installment of a six-part series of getting to the budget approval on June 18th. Andy's going to take some time now to walk you through where we stand on the revenue calculations.
Thank you, John, thank you, board. I appreciate being here. Yeah, we are really focused on identifying all of those revenue sources that we have. It's key for our rethinking funding initiative that's underway as well. And so as we strategized on how best to proceed with this year's budget, we thought, and my philosophy is always start with the revenue and work down from there. And so that's really what this is intended to be tonight, as Dr. Pecal mentioned. So how do we build this, you know, this budget? And how do we identify the potential revenues? Well, first of all, we have to make some assumptions, of course. And so as we know, most of our funding sources are all based on enrollment. And so we have to identify, what is that number that we're going to use in those calculations, those formulas? This represents that number, 18,278 pupil units. Now, remember, a student is weighted differently depending upon the grade in which they're in. And so therefore, we have more pupil units than we actually do enrolled students. And so we have 16,684 as our average daily membership. So on any given day within the district, that would be our number of enrolled students equating to the number of pupil units, then based on their weighting formula. Legislation passed last year, of course, introduced an inflationary factor to the general education funding formula, but they neglect, they chose not to use that inflation factor this year, because instead they gave us a 4% increase last year, the first year of the biennium. So at that time, they also then decided that they would fix this year's, or I should say FY25's, funding increase at 2%. Moving forward, we should see a, or we will see an inflator to that based on CPI, anywhere from 2% to 3%. But for this year, or for, I keep saying this year, for next year, it will be at 2%. We also want to touch on a couple of the assumptions we made that this board has approved in terms of how we're going to go about building this budget. If you recall, several months ago, we brought forth a list of parameters that we are asking this board to approve. And a couple of them have to do with significantly impact how we go about doing our work. The first one is your authorization to use up to $7 million of our existing fund balance to offset those increased costs from healthcare premium contributions for our employees. That is something we've talked about since last fall. You just approved that in terms of that being part of our parameter. We also looked at, then, we still had an approximate $2.3 to $2.5 million deficit. And we chose to look at making those reductions through a strategic process that really made no cuts. So there are no cuts in the number of FTE staff that we have. Any reductions are based solely on attrition. So that may be perhaps a decrease in enrollment at certain grade levels. That may have therefore made a reduction in a particular teacher, maybe a teacher retired, there's been movement. So the thing I want to just make sure to emphasize is there's been no targeted cuts. There have been some cuts as a result of the AOR, Attendance Options Redesign, for example, to FTE in the maintenance area, for example. So there have been some of those, but as part of this bridging the gap of this $2.5 million, we've been able to do it without any cuts, unlike the last two years. We also, as we really focused on identifying the revenue, we realized we believe that we have the opportunity, and we know that we've been doing it, we just haven't been actually recording it. And that is the amount of money that we're generating from our third-party billing. So that is our ability to bill back for our services, special education services, to, in this case, we bill back Medicaid through the state of Minnesota, for reimbursement for several services that we provide. In addition, we expect that that authorization, that ability to bill back, will be expanded to social work services, which it currently is not, and that will therefore increase even more so than what we're generating today. So I wanted to just point that out, because I will get to that in a minute, but that went towards ultimately, how do we address that approximate $2.3 to $2.5 million gap still? And that's a combination of revenue and expenses. As we take a look at our total revenue right now, and I want to make clear that we're talking just about general fund at this point in time. Of course, we'll be bringing the entire budget forward in the coming weeks, but this is the amount of revenue that we are currently calculating in our budget. Couple of things I want to point out. Clearly, Mayo Clinic's contribution is a measurable percentage. And I wanted to make sure that we highlighted that. That $10 million accounts for 3% of our overall budget. And so as we look at how our funding comes in from the various sources, obviously, the state is the largest, local then makes up the next largest share, federal being the smallest. Unfortunately, we wish there was more there, but that's what it is. And so I just wanted to take a minute to just highlight where the major sources of revenue come from, including the Mayo Clinic donation. Focusing on local here for just a minute, we expect to generate about $67 million, almost $67 million next year. Of course, it's the Mayo Clinic donation, the tax levy that's been approved. This is what I wanted to touch on now, the third-party billing. Previously, we'd been in the $2 million to $2.2 million range, but due again to those factors that I just mentioned, we expect to generate about $1 million more. And so we've increased our revenue projection for that particular line item in our budget. Interest rates are still favorable, so we are, like you, we are lucky enough to have the additional interest earnings on our invested, I should say, our investments in cash that we're not currently needing to use for operations. And then a couple of other areas, $1.2 million in our activities, participation and mission fees, so gate fees, admission fees for theatrical events, obviously, participation fees for those students that participate, that makes up that amount of money. And then the rest, I've just sort of lumped into kind of an other of $2.4 million. Now, the state revenue, obviously, our largest amount of state revenue is coming from the general education aid, that formula I mentioned earlier, which is increasing 2% next year over what it is this year. Our special education aid, achievement and integration aid, which we have, we work with MDE to identify specifically programs, which then relate to positions that we fund through achievement and integration aid. And then we have various other sources of state aid that come together to make up the vast, the other 6.8, and then rounds out. So again, almost $212 million we're forecasting for state revenue. I would like to just touch on a couple of things. As you know, the legislative session just wrapped up literally on Sunday. There are some increased revenue opportunities in that legislation for the district. We haven't gone through all of it yet, and we don't have those firm numbers. But I will, just in estimation, we think there's about $1.3 million that is not included in this right now. So I make it clear, this will come into our budget as we come forward in the coming weeks and into the final, but it's not included right now, because this presentation was created prior to the legislature convene, or finishing on Sunday. So about $1.3 million for REED Act implementation, split almost 50/50 between the actual materials and then the amount of funding for training of the teachers. We have in legislation now, once again, full, what we considered full funding of our PTEC program, there was some, there were some proposed changes of that, but that appears to be back into the, for next year, at the same level that we had anticipated previously of about $791,000. And then we also were put into an attendance pilot project that frankly, I don't know a lot about programmatically yet, but I will tell you that in my research, it looks like we have somewhere around $670,000, which is coming in the form of aid, which we have the ability to use over three years. And so more to come on that, I know, from Dr. Pecal and others. So those, that revenue will be included into the final budget when that comes forward. Finally, on the federal revenue, again, it's a smaller share, but it does obviously make a difference when we start talking about the title program, special education programs and others. The other grant, a portion of that is one of our mental health grants that we use to fund some of our staff positions in, specific to that area. Finally, I wanted to just give the board a quick glance at a snapshot of how we look at the funding from a designated and undesigned, or maybe you could say a restricted and an unrestricted perspective. As you can see, about, what is that, 35, 38% of our budget is restricted. Essentially, all of the federal dollars are restricted. There are specific programs and uses for those dollars. 29% of the state money we get also is restricted, and then we have some local restrictions as well. But we do have a larger share that allows us some flexibility in how we actually use those dollars. And again, this is an area that we'll venture more into as we go through the rethinking funding process in the coming months. But I just wanted to share this, because I myself wanted to have a better understanding of it as well. And so, you know, almost 40% of the money we get from our sources is earmarked for purposes that we don't really have an opportunity to determine how that can be used. We have some flexibility, but there's parameters. Whereas the undesigned essentially is, you know, the board can choose to use those dollars in whatever way they find necessary. So, one more slide, I just wanted to make sure everyone understood, we are coming back three more times. John said, you know, this is three of six. And so we certainly enjoy coming to the board, I enjoy coming to the board and talking about the budget. We'll have the full proposed budget overview on the 4th. The following week, on the study session, we'll really dig into it, kind of, you know, really get into the nuts and bolts. I expect that to be more of the discussion opportunity. Obviously, discussion, you know, as you see fit, but we're thinking that that would really be that opportunity. And then, of course, the final, the final session will be your approval, hopefully, of that budget on the 18th.
Board members, any questions?
Oh, just, oh, I'm sorry.
Director McLaughlin.
You can go first, if it's urgent.
I just have a clarifying question on this second, it's the first text slide, the $2.5 million for strategically-aligned reductions. Can you help me understand how that's a revenue? Is it that it's less expense? Is that how it becomes revenue?
Right. So our gap between revenues and expenditures were about $2.5 million, once we factored in using $7 million of fund balance. So we can close that gap either by increasing revenue or finding additional revenue, or decreasing expenses, which will do the same thing. We've been able to make a combination, do a combination of both of those, primarily with that increased revenue for the third-party billing that I mentioned. The additional state revenue that we talked about as well, that's not included here, those, of course, will not be able to go to the quote-unquote bottom line or that deficit, because those are earmarked for specific purposes and have expenses associated with them as well.
Awesome, thank you. Director Barlow.
Thank you. And you may have answered a part of the question I was about to raise. And that is, is it possible, then, to, based on designated, undesigned, after you move toward developing a budget document, allow us to see from whence these budget line items are, from what funding sources are coming from? Not that it's really, for me, crucial, the bottom line is what, you know, the request is versus, well, it's coming from this fund or that fund. But I only, you know, say this out loud, in that I think oftentimes, members of our community hear this huge budget, and they think we're, I don't know what they think, actually. But it's useful to have this breakdown, and I appreciate it. And also the fact that you guys have separated it out from the budget presentation as we have had it in past years, it's useful. So thank you.
Director Cook.
On the third-party billing that led to the increased forecast of revenue for next year, is that, was that a change in Medicaid practices or something that is going to be enduring, or was it like a one-time thing? Or what, can you elaborate?
There is a change that happened at the federal level, but the state hadn't yet adopted the change that allows us to bill for social work services. That's anticipated, again, to come this fall. But regardless of whether that comes or not, we believe we have additional revenue opportunities through our billing process. For example, we hired a second person into this area for the intended purpose to generate more, because the expectation is, and that individual salary is paid through these revenues as well. And so we went back and looked historically, I went back and looked historically. And prior to COVID, we were seeing a marked increase, year over year over year, of growth in this area. And then, of course, it dropped off dramatically, the COVID years. It has begun to build back pretty rapidly. And in fiscal year '23, which was last year, we generated $2.9 million in third-party billing. Since that time, we've added that second individual to do the billing, so we fully anticipate and believe we can generate this amount of money without even the change in billing parameters, allowing us to bill for social work. We think that this is reasonable and achievable even without that. However, if that does come into play as it's expected, that would obviously increase this even further. Third-party billing is really restricted for our use in special education, and so we are using it to pay for several of our special education coaching positions and some other staff positions within that area. And so it's used. And so it's used to help offset some of our special education costs.
Okay, so the forecasted increase in revenue is just about billing for the service that we're already providing?
Correct.
It's not about providing more service?
No.
Or a different rate of reimbursement?
Right.
But it's billing more.
Billing more.
We're stepping up our game in terms of, we don't get paid unless we actually conduct the quite labyrinthine process. And so we're going to try and return to that pre-pandemic trend line.
Got it. That's helpful. Thanks.
Director Garcia.
That was kind of in line with my question about the third-party billing, and maybe mine's too in the weeds, so we can have this conversation offline. But, so I guess my question is, obviously, we weren't billing, or hadn't been billing, at least the last couple of years, for certain services that we could have. Was the change, I don't even know how I want to ask this, because I know that we do this with our contracted mental health service providers, like, they are billing someone else, like, they require the family to give insurance information so that they can bill for those services. Are we doing essentially the same thing for special education? So are we bringing other people in to provide a service, or are we saying, these are educators that we already have in the building that we're just now starting to bill for their services? So does that mean that we're no longer going to need, like, contracted mental health services because we'll be able to bill under all of our current mental health providers?
Well, I think one of the things to keep in mind is, overall, we're seeing a growth in special education service needs in the district, and so therefore, I'm not anticipating, at least in the near term, that we're going to be able to reduce or eliminate certain positions or services, for example. We're not adding services. What we're doing is, we are, as Dr. Pekel mentioned, we are now billing more for services that we originally, or just frankly, didn't have time to do. It's a lengthy process. There is a lot of paperwork that needs to be filed for each and every claim, and to the point where we won't actually know fully how much revenue we will get until later this fall, for this year. There's quite a lag in that, just due to the reporting and paperwork requirements. So bringing a second person in will just allow us, or is allowing us, to dig deeper, to find additional billing opportunities of the same services that we've been providing and will continue to provide.
There's still more in there, but I feel like I can ask.
Services are, I think, the related services, like physical therapy, occupational therapy, it's all those kind of related things that are part of the special education experience that our staff are providing already. I would venture to guess very few of them are actually mental health services in the...
Well, they, the key thing is schooling mental health, and so this won't impact, and in fact, we know there's tremendous opportunity for more partnership if our partners, like Fernbrook and Family Service Rochester, can tap their revenue streams for the actual provision of therapeutic services. But like, a clinical social worker, or a mental health practitioner, or people doing occupational therapy, those are our staff, and those are billable to this source. So we don't anticipate any lessening of our ability to utilize the people who actually do, to use the lay term, therapy directly with kids. So there's a lot. And we do have, you know, our providers here are also trying to be aggressive and entrepreneurial, and finding ways to fund their work with our kids in our schools.
And I think, just as somebody who now has to deal with third-party billing, sometimes it even is just, you know, the insurance will say, no, we're not going to pay for that, and then I have to turn around and write a letter and say, yes, you will, because this is what the law says. I don't know why you're thinking you can be different than what the law says. But, and then, you know, that money does sort of like auto-generate, or they stop telling us that they can't do that. So I'm glad that we've sort of tapped that as an option, and I feel like there's probably a ton of things that we could be billing for, that we're already doing that we just, we just haven't. So I'm glad that the second person has been added, and I'm, I guess, my psychology brain is doing some other work that maybe I'll just send email to you offline about, like, hey, now this is making me think we could probably also do these things. But thank you. Thank you for that.
Director McLaughlin.
So this concerns really the last slide. It's more of a practical question. When might the board receive a digital copy of the budget book for us to review? I know we're not going to have a draft printed ahead of time, but when will we have the opportunity to see that?
We will be providing the, what we believe to be the necessary components to the board to make an educated, an informed decision on the budget before the June 4 meeting. So it'll be part of that. There will be, I expect there to be modifications after that point as well, before we get to the final vote on the budget. And so the actual budget book itself that you've become accustomed to receiving will be a version of the final adopted budget, again, that we will distribute sometime likely in July, once the board has approved it. But you will, of course, have the necessary materials to base a decision, or to make a decision.
Thank you.
And I wanted to go back to what you were saying about the state revenue for this year. Unlike the general education aid, which are being increased by inflation, all of these have some sort of time limitations. I mean, you mentioned the $600,000 about for the pilot project is being used over three years. There's no guarantee we get it after then. The full funding for PTEC is for this year, but we know that the language in the bill kind of phases it down. The REED Act funding is probably usable for a period of time, but it's not like we're going to get 1.3 million every year. And I'm sure that there's other revenue that we're counting from the state this year that were from previous allocations that might be in the second or third year of their lifespan. So I think it's important for the community to understand that, yes, while there was some additional funding, it's not something we put on the books as we move into the referendum conversation next. It's not something we're putting on the books for five or 10 years. It is, it is a time-limited allocation, not an increase in our base general education funding.
What we're really focusing on, as we look again at our revenue, is what is the new revenue coming into the district in the next fiscal year? That may be from a grant that originated a year ago, but it has funding last year, this year, and next year, for example. And then it may end. And so we're not, we're obviously not counting the last two years, we're only counting that one year in our revenue. So that's the, you know, that's kind of the analysis that has to happen to make sure we're not double counting revenue as well.
Anything else, board members? I'm so glad we don't have to binge-watch this series of meetings on the budget. Thank you. All right, board members, the next item is an action item, 8.1, approval of referendum proposal. I will read the resolution and ask for motion and second, and then we can open the floor for information and discussion. Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the resolution relating to approving a new referendum revenue authorization and calling a special election thereon.
Move approval.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion or superintendent information?
Thank you, Chair Nathan. The board heard from me last week at great length, and there's a long memo to you from me and the board website, so I'm going to try and be very brief. If I could ask just Lori to quickly bring up two pictures, the two data points that are driving the recommendation that is before you now. The first, which board members have come to know well, shows that funding from the state of Minnesota, by far our primary funder, has not kept pace with the real rate of inflation for an extended period of time, and therein lies the gap that affects our, the structural deficit that the board has been working to resolve. So that's the picture from the state level. And if Ms. Sam can advance us one slide, that's the picture from the local level. That is the list of school districts that are 10,000 students or more in Minnesota, and it shows the combined voter-approved levy funds that can be used to supplement student learning. And we can see there that of those school districts larger than 10,000, Rochester unfortunately lands last. Board members, we're in this room only months ago, as we were forced, following the failure of the last referendum, to recommend the closure of schools, major reductions in staff, and elimination of key services. Mayo Clinic's investment of $10 million, plus the board's strategic use of $7 million in reserves, has made it possible for us to have a year, the first since I've been in Rochester, without major budget reductions. But it's time to put Rochester Public Schools on solid financial footing, and to give our families the reliability and stability that they need in making plans for their children's education. And so we have developed an investment plan that we're calling Ignite Student Learning. It would generate $19.4 million annually, increased at the rate of inflation through an operating levy. The levy would generate $1,133 per pupil annually. That amount is set to put Rochester Public Schools on sound footing for the future, and based on the structural deficit that we have identified, that gap between our revenues and our expenditures. Very importantly, this recommendation, though, is not just a general request for $19.4 million. It includes very targeted supports for those positions and programs that ignite student learning and support the many of the things that we've even talked about tonight in this meeting. It would provide sustained support for our school counselors, for career and technical education, from construction trades to nursing, media specialists on our elementary schools that helps students develop not just a love of learning, but a love of the things that you read about. It would support middle school music. It would support deeper learning and our implementation of the science of reading. It would support some gems in Rochester Public Schools, like Project Search, that has some of our students with developmental disabilities doing powerful internships at Mayo Clinic, and our staff who helps students learn science at Quarry Hill Nature Center, and our planetarium at Mayo High School. It would sustain new initiatives, like our family engagement CATE program, and the driver's education program that we've launched for low-income students, because we know how much you need to be able to drive a car in Rochester to get to many places. And it would have a few targeted new positions, like somebody to wake up every day and develop a strategy whereby citizens in Rochester can donate to improve our athletics and our artistic programs and extracurriculars for students. And then finally, it would provide sustained funding for mental health screening, to help identify our students who are struggling with depression and anxiety, and potentially even more serious challenges to mental health. Passage of the referendum, board members, would sustain funding for these critical supports for 10 years, and that matters because candidly, it is these kinds of opportunities that ignite learning that school districts often are forced to eliminate. And then you end up with a barebones education that I don't think is what the community of Rochester wants for its kids. And so this is a comprehensive proposal that I am eager to have you vote on, and then potentially, pending your decision, engage with our community in a deep discussion over the next months.
Board members, Director Cook.
Well, it is clear to me that the types of learning opportunities that would be supported by this referendum proposal are precisely the type that parents want for their kids. But beyond that, I really feel strongly, and I remember talking about this in forums when I was running for office, that this, providing our community with an opportunity to support a local investment in education at this level, is the only fiscally prudent thing for this board to do, in my mind. This is what our community needs. We need schools that provide these types of learning opportunities, and they have to be resourced. I have said before, and I continue to believe, that I think property taxes are a poor vehicle to fund public education, but this is the lever that we have. This is the only way that we can do it, and I think it's the only responsible choice to make. So thanks for the recommendation. I look forward to voting on it.
Director McLaughlin.
I have a question about one of the attachments to this. It's called the election resolution. And I need to make sure I'm understanding this correctly, that we came up with that 19 million-plus number, and then divided by the number of students we currently have to arrive at $1,133 per pupil, subject to an annual increase at the rate of inflation. So does that number then, is that number then dependent on the number of students that we have in the district at the time? And what happens if the number of students decreases? Then does that affect what property taxes are charged later? I mean, maybe, maybe it's a kind of a, you know...
A what-if question. Mr. Carlson.
Sure, I'd be happy to answer that.
In enrollment doesn't decline.
That is a per-pupil amount, so it will change. It will go up as the student counts increase. It would go down, or funding, total funding would go down if student enrollment was declining. Obviously, when the revenue amount goes up, the grand total, it means it could be higher property taxes if it were a declining enrollment, could lead to lower property taxes.
So when, when the ballot question is prepared, then, what kind of, I mean, I know it has to be in this certain legal form that's not always easy to understand. Would it be referenced as to the 19, you know, million, or would it be this number of $1,100 per student?
I do not bring a device with me, but I do believe it's in that same resolution.
Is it?
Chair Nathan could read it for us.
The dollar amount is listed as 1,133. So the specific, it's in the, it's in the...
It's the election resolution attachment.
The language on the ballot is, "The Board of Independent School District 535 has proposed to increase the school district's general education revenue by 1,133 per pupil, subject to an annual increase at the rate of inflation."
Right. But, and that's what it will say on the ballot?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Director Mervin.
Just very briefly, I absolutely agree with what Mr. Cook said in terms of this being great for students and great for our community. I was really heartened that we had a number of speakers this evening who already spoke in favor of this referendum, and how important it can be, it will be, for our entire community. And I, and I really appreciate, you know, as we discussed briefly at our last meeting, that what these funds will be used for is cleared out with absolute, is stated with absolute transparency. So I'll just throw my pen, throw my pen, I'm so excited.
Anybody else? As I look at this list, and I think it's really important to reiterate, as the superintendent did, that the majority of things are things that we have. So when you look at the list of what this will support, it will give us stability to keep these things that we have, and Dr. Cook said exactly, these are the things that our parents want, what our students want, based on the enrollment we've seen in some of these career and technical education classes, and CTEC, and et cetera. But as far as what our community wants, there's a significant investment in workforce development in these items. And I think it's, it's really important, as we consider putting this on the ballot, and then hopefully eventually engage in a conversation with our community. This is good because in the past, when we've done budget cuts, and we've heard this from previous community speakers and contacts, once it goes away, it hasn't come back. It has taken us years to come back with a career and technical program that build in some of the things that shop class used to have, even though we do have woodworking, and we have auto mechanics, but, but that visual that a lot of people have in our community of those hands-on, it has taken us years to get to where we are with PTEC and CTEC and those hands-on work. And it's taken us years to get to a strategic plan, I'm going to point at the back of the room because it's my favorite graphic, to plan for how to bring all the pieces together in our schools. And we've never, and I think I said this last week, we have never been at a place in this district where we can look forward for 10 years and say, we're not fixing a hole in our budget. We're investing in identified components of our district for 10 years. I mean, I can't tell you how many budget reduction conversations I had in the, you know, K-12 years of both of my kids. This is an important comfort, if you will, to give our community the opportunity to invest in that, because it's good for recruiting, for businesses recruiting people to come to Rochester, to know what our district is going to be able to offer their children if they were to want to move here. It's going to be good for our businesses to know the kinds of workforce development opportunities we're giving our students, so they know what they might be able to recruit. So I appreciate the specificity of this, even recognizing that it will be, for our voters, a personal decision about their personal financial situation. But I'm going to keep focusing on that word, investment. on that word, investment, because I think there is no better place to invest than in our young people.
Any other comments, board members? All right. Hearing none. There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor of the resolution say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The resolution has been approved. Thank you, Mr. Carlson. All right. Item 9.1, Other Business, Board Questions and Responses. I don't believe there were any questions submitted for this week's agenda. The current version of the ABCD is available in the Agenda Item for reference of upcoming board meeting agenda topics. Are there any Agenda Items board members would like to raise for consideration? Hearing none. Our next board meeting is June 4th, a regular meeting, and then we have a study session on June 11th, a regular meeting on June 18th, and a regular meeting at, on June, July 16th at 5:30. And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 7:40 PM.